Reflect that it is 5:00 PM. In the closed session meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville and the City Council sitting as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, and the Victorville Water District will not be conducted tonight as there is a lack of agenda items. The regular City Council meeting that's scheduled to begin at 7:00 PM will convene at 7:00 PM, and this meeting is adjourned.
Just one meeting in the last year, so you can come here and sit in the audience.
Good evening. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville and City Council sitting as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, and the Victorville Water District. At this time, we'll have any closed session announcements by our City Attorney?
There was no closed session this evening, therefore there are no closed session announcements.
All right, at this time, we'll have our invocation and Pledge of Allegiance. Our invocation will be led by Minister Shavala Bas from Burning Bush Church, and our Pledge of Allegiance, actually, this evening will be led by Captain Destiny Vallejos, which is one of our explorers, so if we could please stand?
Father, in the name of Jesus, we just come to you tonight, God, giving you glory, honor, and praise, asking that you would be with us on this night as we go forth making our requests known, presenting ideas, and looking for solutions. We ask that your wisdom be with us, and that this meeting will be done decently and in order, and that all voices will be heard. And, Lord, we thank you for just blessing our nation, and keeping us, and strengthening us, and that we will be a better Victor Valley, and bless the City of Victorville in Jesus' name, amen.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the quiet of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, well, we have two wonderful presentations to make this evening, and first, I'd like to start off with a presentation to recognize National Fire Prevention Week. If I could have Joe Saccar come forward. This is one of those things where a lot of whereas is about everything that you do to prevent fire in our city is very well-recognized, and we appreciate all that you and the department do to be proactive, do inspections, make sure that our businesses are doing what they need to do, including mine, because you do come out and inspect ours once a year. So, I want to thank you and the Fire Department and the County Fire for continuing to be proactive in that realm, and again, this is just to recognize Fire Prevention Week.
One of the most important aspects of fire prevention is home fire safety, and we commemorate Fire Prevention Week, October 9th, because of traditionally Mrs. O'Leary's cow in Chicago. Burned down the barn, burned down the majority of Chicago. Years later, we commemorated that as Fire Prevention Week. So, again, at home fire safety, most important thing is to have a working smoke alarm. It will save your life in the event of a fire. Other than that, thank you very much, and we'll continue to do our job.
Thank you, Joe. Let's give him another round of applause. Well, as you can see, there are several trophies here, and it's an honor and a pleasure to recognize our explorers. During the week of September 23rd through the 25th, Explorer Post 502 Victorville Station was involved in the Paso Robles Explorer Competition. Over 44 teams participated in this competition. Each team was evaluated on their ability to communicate and act as a team in real-life law enforcement scenarios, situations such as DUI investigations, handling of domestic violence calls, felony car stops, and searches. I'm proud to say that of the 44 teams, our posts took second place overall. So, let's give him another round of applause. Also, during the competition, Corporal Sabrina Ray participated in a competitive interview process vying for a college scholarship. Sabrina did such an impressive interview, she won a $500 scholarship, so let's give Sabrina another round of applause. So, to recognize them, I have some certificates here, so if I am going to call them up in the order that I have them. Frank Tenore. Mary Hayes. Jean Frazier. Joanna Cervantes. Destiny Vallejos. Al Schuler. Socorro Cuevas. Destiny Perez. And Sabrina Ray. All right, let's give him another round of applause. Great job to all of you, but so the audience can see us, if we could perhaps have one of you or a few of you remove some of these trophies. Thank you. I know, well, just want to make sure everyone can see us, so. All right, at this point in time, we'll have the City Clerk present the agenda.
The City Council of the City of Victorville welcomes the public's participation in tonight's meeting. It is requested that all present please silence cell phones, pagers, and other electronic devices, and that personal conversations be kept to a minimum during the conduct of the meeting. Persons who wish to address the council on a specific item which appears on the agenda are requested to complete one of the white speaker cards that have been placed on the agenda table in the council chambers lobby and give it to the City Clerk for the record prior to consideration of the item. The mayor will call upon each individual who has submitted a speaker card when the item comes up for discussion by the City Council. The public comment period is the time and place for the general public to address the City Council on any item within their jurisdiction that is not on the agenda. It is requested that a speaker card also be submitted to the City Clerk for anyone who wishes to address the City Council during the public comment period. Pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.3, state law prohibits the council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. Comments are to be limited to three minutes per speaker or less, as deemed necessary by the mayor, depending upon the number of individuals desiring to speak. All communications are to be addressed directly to the City Council. Individual comments to staff or members of the audience are not permitted. Individuals who fail to adhere to these guidelines may be asked to yield the floor. Any individual or group who engages in disruptive conduct during the meeting will be removed from the chambers by order of the mayor. Disruptive conduct includes, but is not limited to, addressing the council without being recognized, not addressing the subject before the council, repetitiously addressing the same subject, failing to relinquish the podium when requested to do so, verbal outbursts or comments from the audience. Thank you for your cooperation and adherence to these rules. All documents to be considered for approval at this meeting are before the council. Following are the revisions that have been submitted for tonight's agenda. On the dais is memorandum from the City Attorney's Office in conjunction with item number 20 on the agenda, and in conjunction with item number 26, there is a copy of information from the Police Department. And those are all the revisions I have. Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. We'll now move into public comment, and I have several cards here, so we'll go ahead and move into those. The first card I have is Debbie Sessa.
Good evening, council members. My name is Debbie Sessa. Since 1992, I have been serving the City of Victorville, operating a professional rescue kennel that has made hundreds of families happy with a rescued and rehabilitated animal. This has been possible through the support of good people and hard work. Even after my unfortunate accident in 2009 that has left me paralyzed for the rest of my life, I continued on with my vision for the animals due to popular demand. In 2005, the City of Victorville got involved with inspections and charging me for a kennel license to continue to operate. Since 2005 to now until 2011, I have complied with all requirements to continue with my vision. Recently, I was informed by the city that the zoning has changed since 2008, and they have been charging me for my kennel license even after the change was made and legally could not have a kennel anymore. Now, since the past month, I have been given 60 days to downsize the dogs to only three, or they will take the dogs from the program. First of all, the city has been taking money from me for the past three years illegally, making me believe that all is well, when in fact, it was not. This goes in part of the Estoppel principle, includes being barred by false representation or concealment of Estoppel, failure to take legal action until the other party is prejudiced. Having this program since 1992, I should have the right to be grandfathered in and continue this incredible program to save animals and place them in good homes. I am my attorney on recon to sue the City of Victorville for all that they have admitted to be their wrongdoing, and want me to pay the ultimate price for what they have done. Please, council members, look into this corruption and repair it, allowing me to be grandfathered in and continue to help rescue animals and making families happy with a much-loved and wanted new member. Thank you.
Tom LaFortun.
I haven't talked in a while, but first of all, you mentioned a while back about putting the golf course up for sale. Is that going to happen, or is that just blowing in the wind? Or do you know? Yeah?
Talking to me?
Yeah.
Actually, I think I was the one that said that. I've been, and this council's been corrected since then, that that's not a possibility.
Not a possibility?
Not a possibility.
Okay, second of all, you have contractors up here in the High Desert that could use work if it comes up. I don't think it should be open for bid outside of this area, Apple Valley, Hesperia, whatever. Not for anybody down in Redlands, or U Kip, or anywhere else. And third, is as bad as the city needs money for projects to keep these places open for kids to go to, swimming pools, place like that. I think probably the worst thing I read recently is where you said, "Take the money from the sales of cars for the month of December and give that to other cities." I've never heard that in United States of America. Pay your bills here first. Don't worry about anybody else's.
Okay. Thank you for your comments.
Got it?
Chuck Hanson.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Chuck Hanson. I live at 22113 Sioux Road in Apple Valley, and I have good news. We've got a bike ride coming up soon, and you're all invited. And I have some flyers I give to the City Clerk so she can pass them out and find a place to put them, and I hope to see all of you there. And it just seems like years go by fast. This is our fourth annual tour of the Apple Valley, so get your bikes out.
Thank you for the work, Mr. Hanson. Thank you for the work you do in the valley on the bicycles. You've done a lot of work, a lot of human's work for most of us. Thank you.
We are getting some bike lanes up there.
Mr. Hanson, why is it 60 miles? Why can't it be like 10 miles? Some of those, they can't ride that far.
Well, maybe next year we'll do it, but a lot of the people I know, even at 62 miles, would call it a windy ride. We're working this Friday to watch the start of a 508-mile bicycle race.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I have permission to make one comment? The race he's talking about is a 508-mile race that at age 70, he entered and completed. He's the only 70-year-old man ever to enter and complete a 508-mile race, so I just have to let you know that.
Quite amazing, quite amazing. Wally Lynn.
Good evening, Mayor McCaffrey, council members. I'm here this evening to officially invite all of you to attend the Second Annual High Desert Kiwanis Garden Country Celebration Breakfast. This is going to be a phenomenal event. I know many of you attended the one last year, and it was a sellout crowd of about 900 people. It was so successful that this year, we're going into a second building, and we're looking forward to a crowd of about 1,600 people. We have two buildings at the fairgrounds. The exciting part of that is about half the audience is going to be high school students to get a real dose of patriotism and spiritual encouragement. This is a phenomenal event. Hope that you'll be able to support it this year. I've reserved a table for you. If you need more than that, I need to know that, because the first building is pretty much full already, and so it's going to be an exciting event. We're bringing back essentially the same program with some modifications, simply because it was so good that we're going to film it so that we, through our students, can take this program into all the high schools in the High Desert on a voluntary basis. We just want them to get this message. Bob Wieland, our guest speaker, the Vietnam vet who lost his legs in Vietnam, as I speak to you, is peddling across America. He's in Oklahoma City tonight. He left on July the 3rd, Los Angeles, I was down there with him, and he's going on a 7,000-mile bike ride with no legs, with his hands, with his arms. Why is he doing this? To help others who are worse off than him, namely, the wounded warriors coming back from Afghanistan, Iraq, and so on. So, he's a tremendous human being. We're bringing back also Azusa Pacific University Choir and Orchestra, with the hope that by having all these high school students attend this, that the following year, we can have all high school music by using the honor choirs of the High Desert and the bands. So, phenomenal event. We have tremendous support for this. I think I passed out a flyer with the support team. I think Mayor McCaffrey, you're on there, and many of you are. So, we hope that you'll be able to support that again this year, and we'll thank you for coming. It's November 10th. It happens to be the Marine Corps birthday, but we're really celebrating Veterans Day, which is the following day, on the 11th. So, it's going to be an exciting event there at the fairgrounds, so I hope you can make it. Thank you very much. Any questions?
The only thing I would comment on is since our most recent speaker, Chuck Hanson, is so about bicycling, maybe the two of them can hook up, because I think they would have a lot in common, so.
Well, they're strong supporters of this event, I can assure you.
I'm glad, glad to hear that.
Thanks very much.
David Mueller.
Good evening, Mayor, council. My name is Dave Mueller. I'm with highdesirtpolitics.org. I'm before you this evening because I'd like to ask the council if you ever got your figures together on whether or not the city's Attorney Office is actually 857% over budget, like I said. And unfortunately, when I made my comments last meeting, when I sat down, this council through the city manager and some of the council members made comments saying that I don't have my facts correct, and I'm entitled to my opinion, but not my own facts. Well, I'm giving you the opportunity now to tell the public whether or not I'm correct or not, because I found those numbers in the commercial warrants, so I would basically giving you the opportunity to refute what I said. Also, I want to read something to you about the Brown Act. I'm going to speak later on item 20, but the Brown Act under Section 54950 says, "The people of this state do not yield their sovereignty to the agencies which serve them." That means you folks. "The people in delegating authority do not give their public servants the right to decide what is good for the people to know and what is not good for them to know. The people insist on remaining informed so that they may retain control over the instruments they have created." And I think the Brown Act gets violated regularly by not just this council, but a lot of the councils, because they believe that they can discuss things behind closed doors and closed session and not inform the public. I obtained a copy of the district attorney's admonishment of this council for discussing compensation behind closed doors, and that wasn't made public, but because I'm in contact with the Public Integrity Unit, I got a copy of it. And the city attorney should have advised this council that we can't discuss Mr. Metzler's compensation behind closed doors. But that wasn't made public either. That letter was not made public. It was as a result of Councilman Rothschild's letter stating that Councilwoman Valas somehow violated the Brown Act. But anyway, I just, I'm hoping that you'll refute those numbers that I came up with, 857% over budget, and I have my phone numbers on the card. Any one of you can call me and tell me the actual number. Be more than happy to listen. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that is all the items under public comment. Perhaps some of that can be addressed later if we wish. The, we'll now move into our other agenda items. The Library Board of Trustees, we have a consent calendar.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember Rothschild. Motion carries unanimously.
Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, there were no items at time of posting. Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, we have agenda item number four, request to approve a contract with TRL Systems, Inc. in the amount of $30,675.33 for the relocation of the Security Operations Center, SOC, at SCLA Administration Building 728.
Motion by Mayor Protem Cabralis, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number five is request to ratify additional expenditures in the amount of $12,634 for emergency repairs and certification for the fire suppression system for Building 761.
Motion by Mayor Protem Cabralis, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number six, I'm going to ask Mayor Protem Cabralis to take this one as ExQuadrum, as a client of my insurance firm.
Item number six, the request to approve the standard sublease agreement with ExQuadrum, Inc. at 18374 Phantom, Building 728, Suites 8, 9, 10, 11, and 12.
Motion by Councilmember Rothschild, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries with Mayor McCaffrey absent.
Agenda item number seven is request to ratify the acceptance of the FAA grant for the purchase of aircraft rescue and firefighter, ARFF, equipment in the amount of $745,023.
Motion by Mayor Protem Cabralis, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries unanimously.
And just a comment on that, I must compliment I must compliment staff, specifically our assistant city manager, Keith Metzler, and his staff, for whom, if they had not worked so tirelessly to get this grant, we would not have it. And this does protect lives, and it's a great thing for us to receive. So I'm grateful to all their efforts in that regard. Agenda Item Number 8 is request to authorize an equipment purchase of an air rescue and firefighting truck from Oshkosh Corporation for $746,891.
Just a question for my information and probably others. $745,000 is a lot for a truck. And I was kind of curious. Obviously, the federal government believes we ought to spend that. They gave us the grant. Could anyone explain to us exactly what that truck has on it?
Basically, this is not your ordinary fire truck. It's about five or six times larger than most trucks, carries a lot more water, and it's specially built for firefighting in the airport aircraft situations. And there's only a few manufacturers that make this type of truck. And Warren Peterson laid a lot of the groundwork before I even got here to get this truck. And it was out to competitive bid, and that's basically the amount of money for this type of equipment that we come up with.
And it carries, what, 3,000 gallons of water?
Three or four. I think it's 3,000.
Three.
That's a lot of water. And if you -- I went out and observed the fleet that we have out there recently of the firefighting equipment, and a lot of the equipment's getting old. They don't make parts for it anymore. And basically, we were in need of this to support the operations we have at the logistics base out there.
And the foreign truck was, what, 34 years old, I think?
I can't be sure of the date. I'm kind of new to all this, but yeah, around that age. And then there's one that's even out of service out there that they've kind of scrounged around for parts. And the equipment out there is getting hard to get parts. You know, there's new technology for all this kind of firefighting equipment. And, you know, getting a grant from the federal government in this day and age is a nice thing. It's -- I think we're going to see less and less of them as time goes on. But this is, I think, a real kind of aplomb for the airbase out there.
Thank you, Chief.
There's a motion by Mayor Protem Cabralis, the second by Councilmember Rothschild. Motion carries unanimously.
All right, moving on to the Redevelopment Agency, we have a request to approve, 1, the execution of a cancellation and termination of memorandum of option agreement with KSO LLC, and 2, additional appropriation in the amount of $25,000 for reimbursement of the option fee.
I have a question. On this item, there was no backup documentation. I don't really understand why it is they're getting their money back. I mean, wasn't the agreement initially valid?
It was. It was entered into in 2007, and they actually paid the $25,000 fee for an option to purchase the property from the RDA. Since then, the economy has tamped, so the development, it's a commercial office development, cannot really move forward. So we've been extending it, but at the recommendation of the director, we actually just want to cancel it at this point.
Why? If it was agreed to that he gave the $25,000 as an option, and he's the one that's not moving forward, I mean, wouldn't it be a gift of public funds if we give the money back?
No, we actually accepted it as a down payment on a future purchase that just hasn't been able to move forward.
Thank you.
A motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember Rothschild. Motion carries with Councilmember Vias voting no.
Under the Joint Powers Financing Authority, there were no items at time of posting. So moving on to the Victorville Water District, Agenda Item Number 10. This is a presentation of request to set the appropriations limit for fiscal year 2011, 2012 in the amount of $2,058,405 and adopt resolution number BWD 11-014.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember Rothschild. Councilmember Vias, thank you very much. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda Item Number 11 is request to declare certain Water District-owned property, APN 0477-122-03, as surplus to allow for the disposition of such property by staff.
I didn't really understand on the staff rec, why did we buy this property in the first place? And why is it now not useful?
That was water bought by the -- I mean, property bought by the Water District.
Originally, this was purchased by the Water District before they were part of the city. I believe it was for a future well site that has since been determined it's not necessary anymore. So at this point, it's just sitting out there and could be put to a better use. The Water District doesn't -- no longer has a need for it.
On that, I believe there's other property that the Water District holds that will be surplus at some point, won't it?
At some point, likely, yes. As the build-out continues of the water system, I think the Water District, as well as the city, at times, has picked up properties on tax sales, I'm not sure if this was, that may have had a future value, may have had a future benefit to the district or to the city in the city's case. And as we move along with our development, if ultimately we end up not needing that piece, we would bring it to this board or to the city council as you sit for disposition.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember Rothschild. Motion carries unanimously.
All right, now we'll move into the City Council Agenda and Public Hearing, Agenda Item Number 12. This is actually a request for continuance to the December 6, 2011 city council meeting for code amendment PLN 10-00027. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing on Agenda Item Number 12. Anyone wishing to address the council at this time on that item? All right, seeing no one, we will continue Agenda Item Number 12 to December 6, 2011. Agenda Item Number 13 is a hearing called to hear arguments for or against the intent to adopt a notice of exemption for the Montevista Road Alteration Project. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing on Agenda Item Number 13. Anyone wishing to address the council on that item? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and return it to the council.
Motion by Councilmember Rothschild, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda Item Number 14 is a public hearing called to hear arguments for or against the introduction of an amendment to Title 13 of the Victorville Municipal Code to add provisions for the abatement of nuisance conditions that vacant and foreclosed properties has set forth in proposed ordinance number 2285. I'll open the public hearing on Agenda Item Number 14. Anyone wishing to address the council on that item? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and return it to the council.
I'll read the title of the ordinance. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Victorville approving amendment DEV 11-00008 and amendment of the Victorville Municipal Code to Title 13, City of Victorville.
Were you pleased with reading? This ordinance came to us at the recommendation of the planning commission.
That's correct.
Yeah, thank you.
A motion to waive further reading and introduce the ordinance by Mayor Protem Cabralis and the second by Councilmember Vias. Motion carries unanimously.
All right, Agenda Item Number 15 is our consent calendar.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember Rothschild. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda Item Number 16 is a presentation of request to set the appropriation limits calculation for fiscal year 2011, 2012 in the amount of $675,293,534 and adopt resolution number 11-048.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Mayor Protem Cabralis. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda Item Number 17 is request to award a contract to CAD Paving Company for the reconstruction alteration project of Montevista Road at Dos Palmas Road in the amount of $78,594.50.
Motion by Mayor Protem Cabralis, second by Councilmember Kennedy.
I have a question on this award. The bits were listed, but it wasn't listed where the contractors were from. Where's this contractor from?
Sean McGlade, if you could come to the mic, please.
Mayor members of the council, I wasn't familiar with the company. That was the low bid either, and I don't recall exactly where they're from, but it's certainly not the high desert. I believe it's low desert area. I guess contractors are very, very hungry for any work out there.
Is it a yes vote, council member? I can enter the vote for you. Thank you.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda Item Number 18 is request to authorize acquisition of property APN 0478-093-03, located within the neighborhood stabilization designation area. One, affirm authorization to execute the purchase agreement and escrow documents for NSP acquisition of real property. Two, approve the appropriation from the fiscal year 2011, 2012 Neighborhood Stabilization Program. Three, funds in the amount of $15,000 for the purchase and other associated costs to acquire the property. And three, designate the assistant city manager as the authorized signer of all related transaction documents.
I have a question. There was no pictures of the property or a map, or I know the address was on there, but it said that it was -- there was health and safety issues. What were the violations?
Mr. Mayor and Council, Tamara Torres, who's our manager in the housing program for the Redevelopment Agency, is on our way to the microphone to answer that.
There's a number of issues on the property. The foundation is no longer any good. Their basement has a lot of illegal additions added, so it no longer can support the structure itself. It is very unsafe, and it's got multiple structures that can fall down to the neighboring property.
Okay, so is there like a property owner?
The bank, it's bank-owned. It's Freddie Mac-owned.
Oh, I see. So do -- in those situations, when the bank owns them, can they get violations from our code enforcement?
There have been. There's liens placed on the property. We've been working with Freddie Mac for a little bit, almost close to a year, to try to get that address without success. The last option was to acquire it so that we can demo it in order to prevent any.
And then after you demolish it, then what happens to the property?
We're going to landbank it, and we're going to be working later on in long-term basis. It will be landbank and held until we start working on improvements or new infill or new developments out in the old town area. That's where this property is located, where we currently own other lots, and in the future, we hope to develop when the market changes.
What I don't like about this program is that it -- was the property ever opened up to the public to buy?
Unfortunately, it was. It was in market for $48,500. As you can see, we're offering $15,000. In fact, they should be paying us to take it over because we still have to demolish it. But because of the unhealthy conditions on the property, we had to do something. And it was in the market for $48,500. Obviously, they had no takers, so they came back to the city. They turned us down multiple times and went back and asked for more, asked us to offer more, and we negotiated down to the $15,000 that you see in front of you.
Thank you.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, a second by Mayor Protem Cabralis. Motion carries unanimously.
All right, before we get into Agenda Items 19 through 27, I'd like our city manager to kind of frame for us what he, as the city manager, as well as staff, is looking for from the council on these items.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I mentioned at the last meeting, when the council votes effectively showing consensus at the end of each meeting on agenda items, that isn't providing direction to staff to expend significant amount of time doing research on those items. The intent, as I understand the policy, is that it would come back at the next meeting for discussion purposes. And then should the majority of the council wish staff to expend time and potentially money on these issues, on these items, they would provide that direction as well as have a discussion, which would assist us in providing direction on how to proceed or to potentially not proceed. So all of these items, we've asked that you, or you have asked, for your discussion and possible action, potentially giving direction to staff in order to pursue them or to not pursue them. The first item, number 19, is on local vendor preference. The current city code, municipal code, allows a vendor preference of up to 3% with a maximum of $1,000 for the purchase of goods, effectively. It does not apply to services contracts, such as landscaping services. The intent is to try to encourage local vendors to bid on city projects and award those bids where possible. I know that the city attorney's office has looked at our new options now that we are a charter city, and may be prepared at this time to answer questions along those lines. I think the intent of this, though, was to get some direction from the council on if you wish for the city staff to enhance that local vendor preference policy, or if you're comfortable where it is now. With that, we're available for any questions.
Could you explain that policy a little more clearly? I'm not sure I really follow.
Sure. The city is making a purchase. If the -- when we go out to bid, we can apply a local vendor preference, meaning that if the vendor is local, we can reduce their effective bid amount by up to 3% with a maximum of $1,000. We actually pay the full amount, but when comparing it to the other bidders, we could reduce, for comparison purposes, that purchase price by 3% in order to give some preference to local vendors.
To add to what Mr. Robinson indicated, if you want to expand your current municipal code, which is allowing for vendor preferences, you could consider doing it for public works-type bidding projects. However, it needs to be somewhat limited in scope. Since you are a charter city, you are allowed to provide a local preference to local bidders to the extent that the project that you are pursuing is deemed a municipal project, namely, it's not funded with state funds, it's not funded with non-local funds or federal funds, and it is clearly a, quote, "municipal affair." And there's essentially a three-part test to go through, the analysis to determine whether or not it is in fact a municipal affair. You would have that option if you want to pursue that. We can give you some of the information on it this evening, or we can, you know, have a full-blown discussion on it.
Well, I think, and I would highly doubt that anybody on this dais would be against us exploring a higher percentage, a higher level of, you know, the dollar amount. 3% is awfully low. $1,000 is really low. If we could be buying our paper locally... If we could be buying our paper locally, our, you know, our computers, or off, you know, copiers, or, you know, having, having some of the public works projects done locally, I think that all of us would like to see that unless anyone has any differing opinion. I would like to see, you know, more information on this to give us an idea of what we can do, you know, what it means at certain percentage levels, whether that means we go to 5% or 10% or 15%. And just to try to figure out how high we can go without hurting the city, but also making sure that we give local vendors preference on these type of items.
The biggest concern is that we don't, or are not deemed to be violative of either the state or the federal constitution. We're not violating, for example, the privileges and immunities provisions of the Constitution. But again, there is case law that does justify local preferences for municipal affairs, and as long as we keep it very limited in scope with respect to only applying it to municipal affairs, I think it's definitely defensible.
The definition of local, is that strictly within the city limit boundaries, or do we have a, could we have a ringed effect, a first choice, you know, any Victorville business, and then that, maybe the Victor Valley is a second choice?
Right. The case law is somewhat unclear on that. Certainly, it is a stronger argument if you're ever challenged on it, if it is quote within the city of Victorville. However, since you are a charter city and you have the ability to put a preference in place, there's nothing to prohibit you expanding it to the Victor Valley, your adjacent communities. It may be a little more subject to challenge, but unlikely. The fact is that you have the ability to put in a local preference, and there's case law upholding that. As to what that preference looks like has never been determined by the courts.
The current ordinance is applicable only to businesses in Victorville with a Victorville address.
Well, I, I don't know about the rest of you, but I think the idea would be to keep the business here local. You know, we might have business owners up here that have a P.O. box in Asperia but exist and work within Victorville, work within Apple Valley. You know, I just, I want to see the jobs kept here local at whatever percentage level that makes sense, and so obviously that's going to take a lot more research, a lot more documentation, information provided to council, but that's kind of where I'd like to see it go.
Is the council's preference to define local as the Victor Valley, or is it to just keep it the city of Victorville? We can analyze it both ways.
Well, and I think to Councilmember Rothschild's point, having maybe a two-tier, is that possible? Because if that's possible, Victorville businesses ought to get a better, you know, bang for their buck, but if, you know, and then outside of that, the entire Victor Valley having the opportunity to, you know, get that as well before someone from, you know, outside of the area.
Not sure that any community has adopted a two-tier, but we'd certainly be glad to look at that. Staff can look at it.
Yeah, this is just for vendors.
Correct.
What about your, your public works projects?
Public works projects, I know that staff had expressed some concerns to me, and we'd like to bring those concerns, obviously do the research if that's the council's wish, but also bring those concerns to the council's attention when we bring it all back so that you can make an informed decision on those projects as well.
I believe or understand that Caltrans has a guidelines or a regulation, I don't know what the term would be, but that requires when they do a project that 25%, at least a minimum 25% of the project should go to local small businesses. I want to look into that, too.
You bet.
I agree with Ryan. I'd like to explore the two-tier as Victorville number one and then the High Desert as second.
We'll be happy to do the research. Thank you for the input.
And as the way this is structured now, that the percentage adjustment is only on the price of the product, not the quality?
It is only on the price of the product because the current ordinance only applies effectively to purchase of supplies or materials.
Yeah. I would think most supplies, one vendor's going to be the same on paper and things like that.
All right, so this is more direction than anything else. Is there a motion required in any way?
It would be helpful to have a vote on giving staff that direction.
All right, so I'll entertain a motion.
Who?
Motion by Mayor Protem Cabralis, second by Councilmember Vias. Motion carries unanimously.
All right, agenda item number 20, again, another like item, but I know we do have, the city attorney has some information on this tonight. Discussion of possible action regarding the manner in which closed session items are agendized.
Thank you, Mayor McCracken. You have before you a memorandum that outlines very simply the requirements for noticing litigation closed session items. Essentially, there are three different situations, fact situations, that you might want to go into closed session on a litigation item. One is if there is existing litigation, you go into subdivision A of section 54956.9, and in those circumstances, you name the parties to the litigation because it's an existing piece of litigation. You typically cite the case number regarding the cases, et cetera. It's pretty straightforward. The second is what is basically referred to as threatened litigation, and this is the most complicated. It's a situation when there is a likelihood that the city has done something where it may be subject to a lawsuit, and that's an opportunity for legal counsel to go in and discuss with you the potential that you're going to potentially get sued. It's not necessarily limited to just litigation. It could be an administrative proceeding, an adjudicative proceeding as well. And in those circumstances, depending on the facts of the situation, you either have to put on the agenda the facts and circumstances related to that litigation, the reasons that you're going in there. There are about five different subcategories depending on the nature of the threat as to how much information you have to provide to the public with respect to that. The third is subsection C, which is when you, as a body, are considering litigating against a third party. And actually, the Brown Act has quite a bit of flexibility with respect to that provision, the theory being that if you're going to be suing a third party, you don't want to give the third party a heads-up as to the litigation that is coming, and obviously they would then be able to strategize, and oftentimes you may vote not to litigate. So you create a lot of problems if you're threatening litigation and the decision ultimately is not to do so. So the memo sets forth the different requirements, some examples of each. Suffice it to say that I've also been in contact, as Mr. Mueller previously indicated, with the Public Integrity Unit, and we've had some discussions, and to date they have found nothing inappropriate about the way that closed sessions are agendized. And certainly, given the fact that we're under scrutiny, we make sure that we do appropriately agendize all of the closed session items. Be glad to answer any questions. Be glad to give you further in-depth information to the extent you require it.
All right, before we get into any questions or anything, I've got a card here from David Mueller. He'd like to speak on agenda item number 20.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Again, the reason this is an issue for me is that I read to you what the Brown Act says under section 54950, and I, to me, in closed session, if you don't identify what it is you're discussing, then how can the public know? And for instance, tonight, let's say somebody came in for the first time, they've never been to a council meeting. They look at closed session, oh, there's no litigation going on, everything's fine. Well, how many cases do you have pending right now that aren't listed? You're suing Homeland Security, I think USCIS, you're suing them, but it's not listed. The public wouldn't know how many cases you actually have going currently right now. And I think that should be public record because when you hide it in closed session, it's, I understand you have to protect yourselves from notification of suits that you intend to file, but I asked you who the defendants were, and you wouldn't give me that information. So I'm assuming you have not served them yet? And I'm talking about from last meeting, September 20th, items two, three, and four. So how can the public possibly know what is going on when you hide all the cases from the public? There's no way that, how much litigation are you involved in right now that's pending, that isn't resolved, where the cases are identified, but they're not identified in closed session like tonight? There's nothing pending. You just decided because legal counsel decided, well, we're not going to discuss it tonight. So it's all cleared, and people, if they came for the first time, would have no idea what it is that maybe the city is involved in. I think some people might be astounded at how much litigation is going on right now in the city of Victorville. And I think you need to be straight with the public and you need to publish that, and especially the, the Brown Act does say that the plaintiff and defendant and cause of action is, is relevant. The public is entitled to that information. And that's really the gist of my, of my complaint about what's going on with closed sessions and why I've been contacting the Public Integrity Unit, because how can they possibly be informed if they don't know what you're doing? We can't, we don't have access to what you're looking at on that screen. Thank you very much.
Actually, that's not true, Mr. Mueller. Everything on our screen is available online at our city website, but to that, I'll let our city attorney address any of those issues. And also, if I might, I'd like to ask the city attorney, Mr. Mueller, at the last council meeting, asked what the difference between government code 54956.9 subsection C, big C versus little c. Did we ever find out what the difference between those are other than the size?
It's certainly addressed in the memo, but certainly subdivision little c is the situation where we would be considering suing a third party, and under those circumstances, it typically is not wise to name the parties that are going to be sued until you come to a point where there's a final decision to actually sue them. What we do with this council is before there's any litigation initiated or we are defendant in litigation, we do discuss it in closed session, and in compliance with the Brown Act, we give you as much information as is required by the Brown Act in terms of if it's existing litigation, obviously we name the litigation. But as you know, litigation often takes several years, and to update you at every single council meeting on where we stand when a lot of times there's nothing happening in the litigation, it's just a function of waiting for statutes to run or for periods for motions to be heard, et cetera, et cetera. We try and get updates and provide you information and get direction at such time as if some event related to the litigation that's important. Anytime we settle litigation, a settlement, once it is finalized, which means that the other parties have signed it, is brought to the council and put on the public agenda for approval by this board as a body. The same is true when we initiate litigation, we announce who we are initiating it with, or we file the complaint, and if somebody requests a copy of that complaint, it's a public document, we provide it to the public in accordance with the Brown Act requirements.
A lawsuit is filed, my understanding is it's public record.
That is correct.
Whether it's the city, or whether it's me, or Mr. Mueller, anytime a lawsuit is filed, it's public record.
That is correct.
The status of that lawsuit, the hearings, the, all the different aspects of it are public record.
That is correct.
And they can be obtained either from the city or from...
Anybody that requested, if it's a filed lawsuit, and we have copies, we don't, we don't always keep copies, or the city hall doesn't always keep copies of all of the files, but certainly those are public records.
One of his other comments had to do with us protecting ourselves. I'm not aware of any lawsuits that are filed against any individual members of the council or that any individual members of the councils have filed lawsuits against the city or anything like that. It's not our personal issues that are at stake here. Our concern is the well-being of the city of Victorville from a litigation standpoint.
That is correct. The litigation is traditionally against the entire, the city of Victorville as a body, not you individually as council members.
All right, is there anything further on this item?
Yes, I'd just like to address the comment that the city attorney made regarding Mr. Mueller's complaint with the Public Integrity Unit. They haven't decided anything because I'm being interviewed next week, so regarding Mr. Mueller's complaint. So I wouldn't say that they've found you not guilty or that there's anything done. And there's also a letter that came from the DA's office stating that we are discussing things in closed session that we're not supposed to. So I have some serious concerns that we are not agendizing things, we are not being transparent as we could be as a city. And I'd like to just maybe agendize something later in the future when we get that result back from the Public Integrity Unit on exactly what they're finding, but I do think that there's some problems here with how we agendize, how we report out. Can you give us a brief explanation on reporting out items and what's reportable out of closed session?
Fair enough. Can you do that now or do it as part of a comprehensive analysis? But essentially, you report out when you have settled litigation, meaning again, that the other party has actually signed a settlement agreement. Traditionally, what we would do is we'll put that settlement agreement on the next agenda if we have not reported out, because typically you'll be in a situation where we're giving you direction or getting direction from the council as to the terms of a settlement, and until the document is final, it can change at the last minute. So oftentimes, what we will do is then just put the document right on the, on the open session agenda for public review and, and access, and you take a formal vote at that time, which is the settlement of litigation. In terms of when you're engaged in litigation, it's very infrequent that you will actually report out, other than when you are voting to actually initiate litigation and it doesn't prejudice the other side, then you'll report out who you're suing and the names of the plaintiffs and the defendants.
And regarding, talking about compensation and what the DA's letter said, saying that we were not supposed to be talking about it in closed session regarding Keith Metzler's compensation, what, what do you have to say about that letter that you received from the DA's office?
The, the Brown Act allows you to have personnel discussions in closed sessions regarding terms of employment. I don't believe the compensation was negotiated by the council at that point. The actual negotiation occurred at some other point in time. I think there was a discussion potentially, although I'm not going to disclose what was discussed, but there may have been some discussion regarding the compensation which was provided in the document when the document was a, was a public document. The compensation is known.
Because when I tried to talk about compensation, you stopped me and said that was a closed session item.
I don't believe I was here at that meeting, but the attorney at that time would have probably stopped you. It is a closed session. The compensation itself is not a closed session discussion. That's something that happens between the city manager, who's authorized to make those determinations and recommend something to the council.
You were at the meeting. Thank you.
All right, let's move on to agenda item number 21, discussion possible action regarding a residential rental inspection program.
Mr. Mayor, I think the two handouts that we have are numbered incorrectly. I think the one that's numbered 22 is actually 21, and vice versa.
That is correct, Councilmember Kennedy.
21 deals with the inspection program.
Correct, and that, the attachments there are just some information that the department had on hand regarding rental inspection programs in other cities, things they were able to easily pull together so that you could have a little bit of information for your discussion this evening. This is an item that was born out of a meeting that the mayor, councilmember Vias, and I had with the county housing authority, and it's an option that is not focused on any particular group or individual. It's focused on all rental housing and could provide a means to collect revenue through the rental inspection program that could then be used to hire code enforcement officers to both perform those inspections and then also do any follow-up work regarding any issues that we may have with rental homes within the city. The purpose of putting it on the agenda was to get some information to you and also to hopefully spur a discussion amongst the council on whether or not this is something you wish for staff to pursue. It is a self-funding operation that could have a positive impact on the city's overall look and appearance.
I would encourage the council to have us go ahead and pursue and add on to our ordinance. I think this is an additional tool to monitoring the business of rentals within the community, and it's hard enough to get... And it's hard enough to get, get our nose into that and, and kind of protect our citizens, but this is just another little component of that that gets the property owner back into play. And the revenues that some of these communities are using to help back that up, the staff, that is appropriate. So I would encourage the council to go ahead and begin to develop some add-on ordinances to our housing rental.
I think the only way this is a self-funding program is if every landlord in the community pays this fee. If you only have the rental properties that are problem cases pay the fee, there isn't going to be enough to cover it. So every landlord in Victorville is going to have to pay this fee and have their property inspected annually, whether it's a problem or not. Every single landlord. I find that pretty offensive, frankly.
I don't.
Especially because I'm a landlord.
Well, the problem is that I see that, is that many of these rental programs, so it's low and modern, I'm housing, whether it's a section eight for federal level or some variant of that, out of county level, the fact is that when they, when you begin to use a rental, a property embedded within a nice residential homes, two, three, $400,000 homes, you begin to deteriorate the value of those homes. And I think the city is incumbent to protect those. So when you want to be a business and do rentals within the residential section, it seems to me that there's a business license, or call it a fee, a tax, whatever you want to call it, but I think it's appropriate to have some kind of charge for that activity now. Twenty years ago, we probably didn't need that. Today, I think, very much so that we do.
I, I think that, I absolutely agree with you, Mike. I live in a neighborhood where we've got some houses that are in disrepair and pretty shabby landscaping, look awful. I have no idea if they're rentals or not, but I think it's damaging to our value. I know what our rentals look like. What's happening is every landlord is having to pay for a program to police the number of bad landlords, however big that number is. But the true benefit of that police action, if you want to call it that, is to the entire community. So if there's going to be somebody paying for this, I think it should be the entire community. I don't see any particular reason why landlords should be expected to pay the cost of forcing bad tenants or bad landlords to take care of their property.
When you move from a fee which is designated as an activity, as definable activity with an expense to it, there's, like the water district, there's not allowance for profit here, you can build up any kind of a pot for any kind of a future event. But if you go beyond that scope and you say, let's have everybody in the community participate, just like the police department, then I think you move into the area where you need the two-thirds vote from the community on that and ask the community at large, is there, is this problem pervasive enough throughout our communities that we need this tax? Then it becomes truly a tax within the city, clearly defining what it is and its limitations, I think. It could be sold. I'd have no approach, I'd no problem with that, that approach, but it would be, to me, then a vote of the city. If you limit it just to the people that are in the rental activity itself, then we go back to the fee structure. So to me, there's a balance between the two approaches as to how we cover this problem financially.
Do we have a city license for...
Anyone owning a rental home is required to have a business license, I believe it's a $25 fee for that business license.
For each home or for...
No, just a one-time.
For, for rental?
Correct.
Sorry, Mr. Heber, I didn't have a card from you, so I'm...
I understand, I wasn't going to speak, but I, I have a lot of rental properties also, but where are you going to take this?
Larry, would you give us a card, please?
Yes.
When you're finished.
One, two. If you started enforcing this with, and I read Hisparia and San Bernardino, but our problem is rental houses, not apartments and units, majority of them. And a lot of these units are not getting a lot of rent. And like Hisparia has a $65 for the first four units every year. And the next step is going to be commercial. I mean, where do you draw the line to this? Why are you picking on units? When the houses are causing the problems, it just don't make good sense. As somebody that lives in Victorville and has a lot of property and commercial and rentals, it just, look at my property, come down and take a look at it. And I got to suffer because there's a few bad units? Not right.
And all the bad properties are not rental properties.
Mr. Mayor and Council, just to clarify, staff isn't recommending any of the ordinances that were attached, it was just there for informational purposes and to foster the discussion that's going on now. Staff is not also recommending for or against this item. Whether the council chooses to have staff move forward with some more research, look at options, is entirely at the council's discretion at this point. There's nothing on the dais that's ready to be voted on that would be specific as to what units, what types of units would be subject to any proposed ordinance at this time.
Comments from other councilmembers?
Yes. You know, I don't, when, when I brought this up in the last council meeting, I wasn't sure of all the ramifications it would, it would be, I mean, I, I'm looking at it as let's explore it, let's find some solutions. And maybe Kennedy isn't a slumlord, but I, I think that the way the housing authority explained it to Ryan and I and Mr. Robinson was that he, that she feels that it's not the section eight that, that's the problem. It's, it's the absent landlord. So how do we hold the absent landlord accountable? And then we have obviously some landlords that feel that they're not absent and that they're doing a great job. But I guess my questions would be is how do we, how do we know which house is being rented? I mean, how does, I mean, are we just going on, you know, the honor basis here?
Unfortunately, it is difficult for us to ascertain that. In order to do that kind of research, it would require additional staffing, obviously, this program could pay for that staffing. But it would involve researching any rental ads in the newspaper, much like we do with business licenses. If, if someone in business license or anyone in the city sees it in business, they may notify the business license division of code enforcement to make sure that they've got a business license. It would be something similar. It is a struggle, I know, in other communities, making sure that you have each and every rental property signing up for this program, because it is a fee. So that is something that these programs tend to chase as they go.
I, I would like to see it explored a little bit more, different options of where we could go with this. I support Councilman Rothschild's stance on this issue. I would also like to ask the city attorney, since Kennedy stated that he is a landlord, does that conflict him out?
We would have to look before this item comes before the council for a vote to see what, where his properties are. It may create some conflict, but he probably may fall within the exception, for the public generally, the exception typically on conflicts issues.
I see.
It's going to be fact determined.
The important issue is code enforcement. Whether it's a rental property, whether it's a well, a well-managed rental property or a poorly managed rental property, or whether it's owned by a homeowner. Our problem is code enforcement, it's substandard property. Why would we target landlords when the problem is the property itself?
So you're suggesting that just go after everybody for like landscaping issues and...
Yeah, I, I think substandard property should be our target and we should devise a way, and I think it can only be done through code enforcement, to force those owners to address the, the problem with that property.
I agree with that, because this way, it targets everybody and not just landlords.
Yeah.
Because you could have good landlords that are really taking care of their lots.
And we need, and there are homeowners in my neighborhood, I'm sure, who let their properties slide into much worse repair than, than my rental properties. I don't think my rental properties would offend anybody, but we need to target the problem properties.
And, yeah, and it's true, because I have people that, and I've checked, you know, the county records on my block that own their property, and I'm just horrified at the condition that they leave their house in, so a broader base is good with me.
Well, I, I agree with Jim Kennedy, it is a code enforcement issue. And you can't go after everybody just because they, they have a rental, because there are many rentals that are maintained. And this comment about absentee landlords, well, it doesn't matter what's absentee landlords or the, the property owner that lives in, on the property, if he has issues, you know, we debatement, or it could be the property is in despair, whatever it may be, it is a code enforcement issue. And we should perhaps strengthen our code enforcement division, but again, we're talking about money.
That's the other side of the problem. What did we do to code enforcement this year? We, we cut it to the bone to, to try to balance our budget.
Actually, Councilman Kennedy, code enforcement wasn't cut. It was a...
Oh, they weren't, all right.
A potential cut, and the council at the budget hearing actually gave us priorities to, to not cut public safety, including code enforcement. If it's the council's pleasure, we could schedule another discussion at a later meeting to talk about code enforcement's current priorities, as well as their, their style of code enforcement. It's been historically reactive in nature, based on past council's direction. If this council would like to change that direction or take a look at it and get more information, staff could provide that at a, at a later meeting. If the rental inspection program isn't something that, that you'd like us to take a look at.
I would be in favor of giving you that direction.
Me too.
All right, so, sounds like that's a motion. You want to go ahead and record that? That motion?
I'll make that motion. Right then.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember Vias. Motion carries unanimously.
All right, agenda item number 22 is discussion, discussion of possible action regarding a landscape maintenance ordinance. Doug, you want to...
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and Council, on this item, you are provided with what, some additional information about what the city requires. In discussing this with staff after the last council meeting, moving forward with a landscape maintenance ordinance would be problematic at this time. Right now, the city code requires landscaping, but there's really no standard set as to what that landscaping should or should not look like. So in order to proceed, it would require quite a bit of research, as well as quite a bit of discussion about exactly what type of landscaping, what that landscaping should look like. Historically, this council has not been interested in imposing itself that much on private property owners' rights and desires. I don't think we're at that point either. In listening to what the real issues that were expressed at the last council meeting, it was interesting how timely item number 14 on our agenda was today. The planning commission discussed this very issue, landscape maintenance, recently, I don't know the exact date. And in their research and discussion, it seemed that it was not occupied homes that were the majority of the problem, it was actually unoccupied, bank-owned homes. And that's why they moved forward with the ordinance that had its first reading tonight. So rather than giving staff direction, although certainly it's within your realm to do that, I would recommend that we just move on from this item, because it's already being handled by your motion and second and vote on item number 14 earlier tonight.
All right, is the council okay with that? All right, then we'll move on to agenda item number 23, and this is discussion of possible action regarding regular status reports by the San Bernardino County Housing Authority. Councilwoman Vias and I are definitely in favor of this. I, I don't see any reason for a whole lot of discussion, we just would like to have some regular updates from them.
Just keep in mind that we don't have any authority to require the reports to be sent. She seemed genuine, I think she will send them. If she does, then we'd be happy to put them on the agenda as a, you know, an informational item, consent item with other reports, if that's the desire of the council.
I, I just wanted to make sure that, the report that I wanted was because a lot of the constituents in Victorville believe that these blighted houses are section eight. And according to the housing authority, they said that when they call and, and make a complaint, let's say they have 10 complaints, that there's, you know, this house is out of control, nine of them are wrong, but, so I would like to see that in the report of, you know, how many complaints are right and wrong. They're not going to give us specific addresses for privacy reasons, but at least that we know that they're looking into these issues.
All right, so we'll entertain a motion on that item?
The motion is to make a request for that report, right?
Correct.
I think she heard our request and she said she would do it.
Yes.
Yes.
And we will put that on the agenda anytime she sends it.
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Mayor McEckern. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number 24 is discussion of possible action regarding placing advertising at bus stop shelters.
On, on this item, I sit as the commissioner for the Victor Valley Transit Authority, and the other cities are getting advertising through bus stops, and that's revenue to the city, and we don't do that. So I was requesting that staff look into it. Hisparia has a special company that does the advertising, and I thought maybe we could do it so we could bring in some more revenue.
I have some comments. I think the idea of revenue coming out of advertising is a perfectly legitimate idea. We've tried that once before on, on our buses advertising, and we got into a discussion on some of the types of signage and freedom of speech and everything else. If we're going to go back into that arena again, I think the council needs to know the parameter of the box in which we're in, in terms of restricting freedom of speech, and what kind it is, and what do we want on there, and what legally we can do to limit that. It seemed last time we got into an area where we were totally disagreeing with what was going on in the signage, and so the only alternative is no signs at all, so we completely cut out the advertising and protect ourselves, so that we didn't have to put up with the bad messaging. So we're going to get back there again. I'd like to hear from some of the other communities as to how they're dealing with these, whether the Nazis coming in with their swastikas or Ku Klux Klan, or you name a group that seems to be reprehensible and has those kinds of language and symbols and messaging, and they want to get on there too. We need, we need to look at that. But I think as a source of revenue, it certainly is a, is a legitimate area where we can pick up some. So we need a, a full discussion of that.
Can I ask, historically, what, what was the specific issue? Was it like pornography or what, what happened?
No, it wasn't pornography.
We discussed this a little bit in staff meeting, and actually, just outside the council meeting, and there was several folks who had a sort of a foggy memory of, of it having to do with a union issue around the time that Food for Less came to town, which is many, many years ago. You know, we'd be happy to see if we can piece back together what the discussion was from back then on what the issues were and why the council at that point decided just to eliminate all advertising and bring that to this council for, for discussion.
That's a good idea. I didn't think about that.
All right, it sounds like I've got enough in favor of moving this forward and having staff research that, so.
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number 25 is discussion of possible action regarding hiring more sheriff deputies.
Mr. Mayor, prior to the discussion, if I could just give a status update to the council and the public. Captain Yoder came to me probably month to a month and a half ago regarding a couple of vacancies that he had due to some retirements, resignations, and I authorized filling those because the budget included seven vacancies, these were in addition to, so I authorized those immediately. If you recall back when we had the budget adopted, staff had budgeted to fill two of the seven vacancies that we currently had, I left it at the council's discretion whether or not you wanted to fill those. Although, quite literally, the day of the council meeting, there was some ominous news in the San Bernardino Sun newspaper regarding the sheriff's contract and the fire contract and the fact that the unions were not all agreeing to take pay or retirement cuts, and that it could ultimately cost the city more money to, to, for the existing contracts in, in future years. At that point, we recommended... we recommended that the council not take action regarding those two deputies. And approximately, probably three to four weeks ago, Captain Yoder came to me again, talking about the need for a additional retail theft detail, needing two deputies who would come on fairly quickly in order to get trained so that as we move into the retail height shopping period between Thanksgiving and New Year's, really, that those deputies would be trained in time to handle that beat. At that time, because it was a budgeted item, I authorized filling those positions, so as of, I believe, this weekend, we should have only five vacancies rather than the seven that we've had for the last couple of years. With that, I'll turn it over to the council for your discussion on this item.
I'd like to make a comment, and I think the process that was followed, really the process that brings you the best results. You have your professional, he's asking for two police officers, and the city manager, we did have the money, the city manager authorized that, and I think that's the case with the fire or whatever department. If they make their case and the money's available, then this council will always consider that. But, I think it was a good call on your part.
Very good call.
The recent news is our sales tax revenues are up. We'll have to see how that plays out for the year. I think if there's additional revenues available, I can't think of a better place to put it than in our police department. But, I remain where I was six months ago or three months ago. I'm not willing to spend money that we don't have. And we have to rely on the chief. If he comes to us and says he has a situation that he can't handle with current staffing and he needs more, we need to respond to that. But, if I don't hear that message from him, I can't justify cutting in all the other places when he has not expressed that concern, that need.
I support adding the two additional police officers at this time and working into the phase.
Well, and I concur. I'm glad we were able to add those two additional deputies, and, you know, I'm hopeful that because of what we're starting to see, the turnaround in this economy, sales tax up 11.6% over last year in that first quarter, that it will allow us to start moving in a direction where we start adding deputies on an annual basis. You know, Captain Yoder and I had this discussion, well, what does it mean to add five deputies? Well, it may mean three quarters of an officer on every shift or every beat, and it just, you know, kind of like, at that point in time, you got to wonder, what does that really mean to additional proactive patrols? Where does it get us? You know, again, if I had my druthers and I had the ability along with this council, I wish I had an additional $9 million to fund 50 additional deputies. That's what I asked for when I came on this council. Unfortunately, we don't have the money to do that, but it's going to, for 50 additional deputies, it's approximately somewhere around $9 million a year. And that's ongoing out of the general fund, and we're already upwards of $20 million on our sheriff's contract, which is the largest contract the city's general fund has. So, I appreciate Captain Yoder and the Sheriff's Department for what they're doing and fighting the crime that we do have with the resources that are provided to them. I still think we need more, and I'm hopeful that there are going to be some things like the sales tax figures that are up, as well as potential settlements in the future that might allow us to start moving in that direction. Obviously, you can't add 50 at one time, but really, that's where we need to get to. I'm a big proponent of one per thousand. I think we need to get there. To my belief, our population is around 120,000 right now, regardless of the reported number, but it's got to be around that number. And so, we need to have 120 deputies at some point in the near future, but that's where we need to head. So, I think we all agree with that.
I agree with that very much. I think that with the increased sales tax that we're getting, that I think we need to, as a council, next budget, I would like to see at least two officers every year. We grew in this city drastically in the last few years, and we didn't grow the police department. We cut police positions. And we need to not only catch up, but we need to add officers. And I agree with Ryan, we need one per thousand residents. I'm concerned that, you know, we're not getting to calls, we're not, you know, especially with San Bernardino dumping, I mean, the governor dumping the 6,000 criminals in our area, crime is going up. And if you have crimemapping.com, you can see that two miles radius from the Brentwood area, in the last three days, there was 19 crimes reported. And it's getting worse, and it's only going to continue to get worse. And I think this council needs to pay attention, and we need to really look at that every budget cycle and make an effort to start funding more deputies.
All right, I think we all are in concurrence on that. So, Doug, that's your marching orders as you go forward with the mid-year review and ultimately the budget for 2012, 2013. Agenda item number 26 is discussion and possible action regarding the Brentwood crime statistics compared to other areas of the city.
Mr. Mayor and Council, Captain Yoder provided the original presentation that he did. It has some of the data. It's a little bit split because of the way the beats work for the city. He's available for, to answer any questions you may have, and also to listen to the discussion if there is any future action desired as a result of this agenda item.
I do have some questions. You know, they're saying that the overall crimes in San Bernardino County have gone down. Is that correct?
Yes, of course they have.
Yes. I find it hard to believe, and I'll tell you, that, do you, does the sheriff's department have less officers on the street now than they did before? That you're doing the same comparisons to?
That's correct.
So, if you have less officers, you have less officers arresting people, less officers taking reports, less officers responding to calls. So, of course, the statistics are going to show that it's down, but so is our officers. Do you agree with that?
Yes.
So, the numbers are skewed. It's not that we're safer. Is that right?
I believe, I think the types of crimes have changed from more violent crimes, Part One crimes more, to paper-type crimes. So, you have more internet-type crimes that criminals are getting a little smarter than how they used to be. Why go pull out a gun and rob somebody when you get on the internet and do identity-type thefts? So, I think just the way criminals are becoming more intelligent and the way they commit crimes have changed. And quite honestly, you're getting a lot of victims that just don't report their crimes.
How much overtime is, does your department expend in the last six months?
As a whole, the sheriff's department?
Yeah.
I don't have those numbers with me.
Okay, because that's a concern, is if we're spending a lot of overtime, I mean, would it be more feasible to hire an officer? Or, I mean, I know that we count out the benefits, so.
We try to maintain our overtime. We get grants from the JAG, burn grants.
I'm not complaining about the overtime, trust me. I want cops out there. I'm just saying that instead of overtime, would it be more feasible to hire someone full-time?
Are you specific to the city of Victorville or the sheriff's department?
Yes, that's, yeah, to the city of Victorville.
Well, we threw grants and monies that we budgeted in our budget prep. I think we're budgeted for $550,000 for overtime, just within the city's budget. We do receive grants that we use towards our overtime that we can't use to pay for personnel. It's specific to overtime. But, overtime includes your court costs, covering days off, holidays, vacations, injuries to deputies, that's all part of that. So, it's really not enough to where you're going to hire an officer. You're still going to have to pay, maintain that overtime.
Okay. So, your question was, I mean, my, your answer was yes. It's not that we're safer because crime is down, it's just that there's less officers doing reports. Is that right?
I don't know the history of Victorville, how far back, and what the total number of deputies were. I think Victorville has done a great job as far as not cutting positions. I think other cities, you look at the High Desert, have cut actual positions and lost those position numbers. The city of Victorville, when you guys did your budget, you maintained those seven vacancies to include those position numbers. So, at any time, as like you talked about, probably 72 monies coming in, sales tax monies coming in, if you find the funding to fill those positions, you don't have to go back to the board of supervisors to redo your contract. While other cities, again, did away with those position numbers, you maintained those positions, knowing that if the money came in, you could fill those positions.
Your answer was yes?
Yes, ma'am.
And then, I have, I'm still getting a lot of complaints that there are parties going on in Brentwood and the police aren't showing up. Can you explain why that's happening, or?
Councilmember Vias, if I could suggest holding that question until the next item. It's all about the prioritization of police calls.
Yeah, since I was the one that requested this item, I'd kind of like to get to the point of my request was, which was a comparison of crime throughout the city. Could you, could you kind of give us an idea of the boundaries of the beats? And in particular, Brentwood is in Beat Six, am I right?
Beat Five.
Beat Five?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I thought we had the slides.
Brandon's working on getting the slides up and on the, all of the screens. We weren't sure how deep the discussion was going to go, so it's not quite queued up.
And Beat Four is what area?
It's generally going to be around the mall area, everything that is that and south of the mall.
And Beat Three?
We'll get the map up in one second. Your PowerPoint's ready, Don. As you see, the red line going through, that's going to be the 15 freeway. It's divided into two halves. You'll see Beats One, Two, and Three. Generally, it's going to be on the east side of the 15 freeway. Beats Four, Five, and Six are going to be on the west side. Beat Four primarily is everything west of Bear Valley Road, I'm sorry, south of Bear Valley Road. Beat Five is still going to be the portion of the mall area, but going up towards the Brentwood Track area. And just to the end of the Brentwood Track area is our Beat Six. Beat One is portions of the Old Town area, and everything north and east of that. Beat Three is going to be Bear Valley Road up to the bordering of Hesperia and Apple Valley. Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, what, did you say what Beat Three was?
Beat Three is going to be Bear Valley Road, which borders Hesperia, all the way to Apple Valley's, the city or the town of Apple Valley's limit. Looks like the gnarly boundary is Green Tree Boulevard. It's Green Tree. And just for the council's information, Brentwood, if you see the two big cutouts there, those are the county islands, the smaller rectangular one, just sort of in the northwest of the larger area. If you go to the very northeast corner, the upper-right corner of that, that corner is county corner to the Brentwood area. The Brentwood area is the sort of highly concentrated area immediately northeast of there, and it actually crosses from Beat Five into Beat Six. So, you've got officers from both beats that can respond, and typically would respond to calls in within Brentwood.
Captain, do you keep, do you keep more detailed statistics on neighborhoods like Brentwood?
You know what, we have to go through our crime analysis, who really breaks down the information per that reporting area. But, generally, what you see today is just the stats within our beats. We maintain a six-beat pattern. So, the stats that you'll see today are from the 1st of January till the 1st of November 26 is our date that we have on it. So, breakdown of calls for service, the Part One-type crimes, the Part Two-type crimes.
Give us an idea again. Part One, we know are the more serious murder, rape, robbery, armed robbery?
Armed robberies.
Robbery?
Generally, they are homicides, sexual assaults, robberies, assaults, burglaries, theft, and motor vehicle thefts.
That beat has, the Type One crimes are surprisingly even, between Three, Four, and Five, a little bit lower in Two and Six.
Yes, remember, part of the Beat Five is part of the mall area, even though it encompasses the Brentwood area. You still have a lot of, because the restaurants, the mall area up through there, so that really encompasses that portion also.
What do you think explains the Type Two crimes? What's in it, and why would you think Beat Five would be so much larger?
Apparently, it's just not Brentwood itself. It's because of the mall area. You have more shopping centers in there. I think the banks are there, more restaurants, more places. It's a more transient area, so you have more people getting off the freeway at Bear Valley, going up into the shopping areas. It's easy on-off access to the freeways. So, you're going to have more crime in those areas because you have more people going to those areas.
What's included in Type Two, again?
I'm sorry. Type Twos are simple assaults, simple thefts, your general misdemeanor-type crimes.
So, I understand Beat Five is Brentwood area?
It's part of the Brentwood area, yes.
Okay, so it would be Beat Five and Beat, Beat Six? It kind of orders?
Beat Five.
It's Beat Five, for sure, not Beat Six at all?
There may be just a sliver of it in Beat Six, but primarily it's Beat Five.
Okay, and your chart, does it show like how many residents?
That was what we put on the last one.
Oh, the last one?
The last, the last meeting, I'm sorry.
Oh, the last meeting.
The number of residents within Brentwood. Let me see if I still kept my notes on that.
So, there are a lot of crimes in Brentwood. This shows a lot, more so than the Green Tree area.
Yes, comparable to Green Tree, yes.
I guess that's why they're complaining.
Well, I'm not trying to create competition here, but it, no, it seems to me that the Beat Two areas are much, much smaller than the Beat Five, but that must also mean that the population is more dense and more concentrated in Beat Two. Would that be a true statement?
There's not a lot of dangerous golfers out there.
You haven't seen the golf.
Have you seen our city manager golf?
I've seen him play golf. Yeah, there is. I'm sorry, I don't have that information for the Brentwood. That was off the last presentation that I had for you.
Well, I think, you know, maybe as some direction and further clarification, especially with respect to Beat Five, if there's a way that you can go back into your systems and break that down, because I think one of the representations you made was that a lot of these Part Two crimes are occurring in the commercial areas and not in the residential. And because of the mall, the shopping center where Best Buy used to be, or now Best Buy has moved, but they're still in the same general vicinity, you've got that entire shopping center there along Amargosa Road, additional restaurants there. So, is there a way for you to break that down? I think Councilmember Kennedy asked, but I wasn't sure if I, if.
Well, you know, and the other thing is, I would think, if I were the captain, I think I would probably divide up the beats so that I could get an even distribution of the crime problem among the forces. I wouldn't just arbitrarily draw boundaries. I'd want to have my forces.
Everything's also broken down into reporting districts. I mean, you look at your beat patterns, you look at the crime of the beat patterns, the size of the beats. So, we maintain Robert cars, which are Robert cars that will put into the Beat Five areas and cover the Beat Five, Beat Four areas. So, we know our higher crime areas that we really put more officers in, but we still maintain an officer in every beat. And to answer your question in reference to households, in this city of Victorville, we estimate it's 32,470 homes in the city of Victorville. Within the Brentwood- Within the Brentwood area was two thousand three hundred and thirty-seven homes, households.
Okay.
And how many officers do, how many citizens per officer do we have in Victorville?
Currently, we are the highest in the high desert at just over point seven zero per thousand. I think Hisperia is the lowest, point seven zero. Just below a three-quarter of an officer per every thousand residents.
For every thousand officer?
Yes, comparable to Hisperia is probably about point three-five.
So in Victorville, we have more deputies for our population than other neighborhood communities?
Any other region in the high desert. And I think the average on law enforcement statewide is probably about point seven-five right now.
Is that because Victorville is much more crime-ridden city than Hisperia and Apple Valley and Adelanto?
I would never say that, sir. They are my friends.
Historically, that's been because we have the commercial area, so it brings in additional sales tax that we can hire officers, but also because of the commercial areas, it also does bring in the potential for additional crimes that the other cities haven't quite grown into yet.
And again, it's just our last slide, it's just a breakdown for this time period, we had over eighty-six thousand one hundred and twelve calls for service, twelve thousand four hundred and ninety-one reports have been taken by, by our officers, and that's the percentages per beat.
Why are there not eighty-six thousand reports?
Some of them are just, it could be nine-one-one hang-up calls, alarm calls, just somebody needed information type calls, we respond to everything, traffic stops are considered a call. So anything that either we are creating or somebody calling in and creating a call, it creates that call.
I received an email last week from a lady who's really quite unhappy with the council. She believes she witnessed what she thought was a crime at the intersection of Hisperia Road and Verde, and I'm not sure where Verde is, I'm familiar with Center Street, Center Street Park, that intersection. I'm not sure where Verde is, but she believed that she saw some people jumping in the back of a truck and created a, a problem, and she wanted to know what the council was going to do. And my thought when I read that was, you were there, you were the one who observed this thing, shouldn't you have dialed nine-one-one on your phone and reported that call? Do you get many of those kinds of reports?
Ron Dunn and our Captain Rod Torres from our dispatch center, they'll talk about priorities, calls, some types of calls that they do get, but we get generally hundreds of calls a day that we respond to that really does not need law enforcement action. But we don't get a lot of calls that we should get calls, and that again is why we're trying to get the community involved, if they see a crime, make sure that they call us, and we'll respond.
You get many crime and crime calling, because I see a crime in progress, and here's what I'm seeing, you get those kind of calls?
We do.
Captain Yoder, we do have a card here on someone that would like to speak on agenda item number twenty-six, if I could have him come forward, Eric Smith.
Mayor, council, thank you for your time. First off, I want to say I'm a disabled vet. I made it through two wars, and right now, I'm scared to death of watering my grass. And I'm more worried about dying here than when I was in Iraq, because I don't know when it's going to happen. But with that being said, over the weekend, there was a party where that sixteen-year-old girl was killed. We talked to the neighbors, they called the police, no one ever showed up. To me, that's a problem. If there was a party where someone was killed, I think that would be one of the major priorities to go stop something there. That's, you know, I think that's unacceptable. And now, listening to about the two officers, last time I was at the city council meeting, we were, I was told, I asked, I was told that the two officers were going to be on the beat or on patrol, not doing the mall security, stuff like that, that the police that were with the school units, we're going to be doing that. So my question now is, are the two officers going to be on the patrol, or are they going to be at the, working the mall area for theft?
Keith, we can't hear you, you need to. The city manager filled two positions due to medical retirements. Those two deputies will be filling patrol positions. The two vacancies that he filled will be utilized for theft, retail theft.
When I asked, I was told that the, since the school, police officers aren't going to be in session because they're going to be out of school, they were going to be taking over for the theft and everything.
They will be part of our retail theft team, yes.
Okay, so we're getting, does that mean we're getting four officers then?
Yes.
Okay, so that's new, okay, four officers are coming in.
Yeah, actually, the city manager was kind enough to fill a detective position, two medical retirements, and then the two vacancies. So actually, in reality, we're filling four deputy positions and one detective position.
So we are actually hiring detectives and patrol at this time?
Exactly.
So then what's the major discussion about needing more when we're not being told that? I guess I, I don't know if I'm misunderstanding or anyone else is misunderstanding, but.
I think we discussed that at the last council meeting, that the city manager has filled these positions.
Yeah, I think the council is just making it abundantly obvious that their priority is still police and fire, public safety, and that the next time we have a budget meeting, I'm sure it will be a healthy topic of discussion at that point. I appreciate the fact that they're asking that it be brought up at the, at a budget meeting rather than in the mid-year when we don't really have any capacity to, to fill other positions other than the ones that are budgeted.
Okay, so the two new detective, the two new police officers that are coming on, does that mean that they're going to be on patrol Brentwood more? Because like Councilwoman Byrd said, nineteen crimes have occurred in the last three days in a three, three-mile radius of Brentwood. I mean, since I was last here, we have seen more patrols just closing up and down Renton Loop, but I'm off of Castle Peaks, and I have not seen anyone really coming through there, so I'm just curious on, you know, we call, and I know, I guess it's going to be discussed about the next priorities, but we call, give plate numbers, give description of people, and we call the Wtip, and we're like, oh, there's nothing we can do because there's other priorities. But if I'm, if I'm witnessing a drug deal going across, and I'm giving license plates, I'm giving description, bags that are being passed, I think that should be a priority. If we're trying to clean up our neighborhood and we're not being helped, it's just going to keep on going on.
I know your neighborhood, and we've been in contact with you and your girlfriend.
Yeah.
So there are things that we're working on that we don't want to put out in the public.
Okay.
So I think you just need to give us time to do our job.
So can I talk to you out?
Sure you can.
Outside?
And we had met at our community meeting, so.
Yeah. Okay, then I'll talk to you after the meeting then?
Sure.
All right, thank you.
Captain Yoder, one other question, and that has to do with the incident where the girl was shot.
Was it us or just?
No, it's just.
Oh, I thought it was her hand.
All right, thank you.
No, how many calls did you receive that night for that particular event where the girl was killed?
That night for that event?
That night, that event.
Zero.
Zero?
Zero.
We're being told by citizens that you got multiple calls, how could that be?
We received no calls from any residents that night of their party until after the shooting occurred.
And all of your calls are taped, and they all hit the system, and there's no way for you to go in and delete five calls?
All taped.
It's impossible. All right, well, it sounds like we're kind of moving into agenda item number twenty-seven, so I'd like to go ahead and move in that direction.
I'd like to introduce Captain Rod Torres and our manager.
One question.
Yes, sir.
Sir, how long have you been a police officer?
Twenty-six years.
Okay. You know what, having come from the public safety sector, I understand the, you know, the budgets, and I understand the, the demands, and the demands of not only providing the, the service, but the monetary or budget restraints that we operate under. But you know what, with your twenty-two years of service, chief, I'm going to let you figure it out. You're the expert.
I appreciate that, and I, I commend all of you for, for your support. You know, if anybody says that none of you support law enforcement, I can say quite honestly, that's BS. I think Doug has done a fantastic job of supporting us and everything that I've gone to Doug, he supported that, filled the positions right away. I've had conversations with almost every one of you about public safety, many conversations with Councilmember Valdez, and I understand the frustrations of the community, and we're doing the best that we can, but they also need to understand there's other parts of the city that needs to be fixed and added, and keeping the parks open so we have place for these young kids to go to. So we'll just continue to moderate. I know that you guys would support me if I needed those officers, and I felt that it was a dire need. But we're really trying to get the community involved in what we're doing, we need their support, and we know we have your support, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. I want to thank you for having me here this evening. As Captain Yoder mentioned, my name is Rod Torres, I'm commander of the dispatch center not only here in the desert, but also over Valley Communications as well. I've been doing that for now for about three or four weeks, and just on a personal note, I can attest, I want to reinforce what Captain Yoder said, in that I served as the executive officer here to the city of Victorville for a few years, a few years ago. And I might add that the council has always been supportive of the police department, they make it their first priority, and I just wanted to echo kind of what Don said about that. So I think the citizens here in Victorville should be pleased that that's always been a first priority of the, of the council. Don had mentioned to me that there has been some concerns about how prioritization of calls are, are made. So with me this evening, I brought Communications Manager Ron Dunn, he's been there at Desert Control for several years, and he's going to talk a little bit more about how those prioritizations are made, and give you a little bit more statistics to hopefully give you some insight into our communication center. And before, in case I forget, I wanted to extend an invitation to any member of the council that wants to come and tour our communication center and see how things operate, we'd be more than happy to accommodate that as well. So with that, Ron Dunn. Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council, like you said, my name is Ron Dunn, I'm with, I'm the sheriff's communications manager here at Desert Control, I've been with dispatch for almost nineteen years now, started in the valley and then moved up here in two thousand and six to take over the center. The question was on how calls are prioritized. We currently have five priorities that the department recognizes. We have our emergency priority, which we call an EP, which is immediate crimes in process, crimes in progress against a person such as a one-eight-seven, an assault with a deadly weapon, or armed robbery. Our priority one, which is potential life-threatening violent calls in progress such as brandishing a weapon, a fight in progress, excuse me, a stolen vehicle. We have our priority two, which is non-immediate life-threatening in-progress calls that have the potential to change at any given moment, such as a party call, a keep-the-peace type call. Our priority three is a non-violent in-progress type call, such as a fraud type call, bad checks, recovery of a stolen vehicle. And then we have a priority four, which is basically a catch-all for anything that wasn't named above, such as a barking dog or a harassing type phone calls. There is a policy committee on the department, it's made up of ranks from lieutenant all the way up to deputy chief, they determine what the priority of all types of calls are going to be. Dispatch doesn't do that. So where the type of priority falls within the department is based on the priority committee and the deputy chiefs. Give you a little statistics, like the captain was saying, our dispatch center covers everything from one-thirty-eight north to include Wrightwood, Colorado River, Morongo Basin, the high desert up here in this cell. Last year alone, our call center took five-hundred-and-forty-nine-thousand-twenty-two calls for service, that's incoming calls from the public. This year, we're on track to possibly exceed that, as of the end of September, we're already at four-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand-five-hundred-and-ninety-five calls. Of those, one-hundred-and-seventy-thousand, almost one-hundred-and-seventy-one-thousand are nine-one-ones alone. So forty percent of all our calls are nine-one-ones. So you understand what the state requires is that, this is through the operations manual from the California State nine-one-one, says calls answered within ten seconds. During the busiest hours of any shift, ten seconds shall be the maximum amount of time in which incoming nine-one-one calls are to be answered. The state realizes that unpredicted spikes may occur and will take anomalies into consideration when they determine our funding that we do every five years. With that, I'm open for any types of questions that you may have on how we handle calls and how we prioritize them.
I get a lot of complaints that party calls are not being responded to. How many calls, let's say on Friday, Saturday night, do you have average holding?
It varies, you mean just in the city of Victorville or in the whole area that we cover?
Just the city of Victorville.
I don't have those exact statistics as far as how many specific calls are holding, and it's based on the different priorities that they would hold, you know.
Is it common for a call to be canceled due to a time delay?
If a call's going to be canceled from the dispatch's side, we will call the RP back, the RP is, sorry, is the reporting party, the person who called in. If there's going to be a delay, there's oftentimes a sergeant in the field may ask us to call them because they're handling, they may have had a homicide or a shooting where a lot of their officers are dedicated to that crime scene or finding that suspect, they may ask us to call back, and if it's a non-life-threatening type situation, whether it be a party or not, to call them RP back and ask them if they still wanted a deputy, advise that it's going to be an extended ETA, and we will get out there as soon as we can. There's oftentimes that the RP will just say, I'll go ahead and cancel it.
Is there ever a time where they cancel it without getting back to the reporting party?
On dispatch's end, no. As far as on the patrol end, I don't know. The sergeant or the patrol station has the, they're the experts in the field, they can determine what calls are going to be canceled based on their expertise or what their policies are for the station, and that you would have to deal with the station on. Each station is different.
Would you say that fifty calls holding for Friday, Saturday night for the Victorville area is common?
Fifty calls? No, our deputies are out there busting their butts, getting calls, you know, shagging them as quick as they can. I, I don't believe we have fifty calls holding at any given time.
How, how many stations does your dispatch cover? I guess I had the impression that our, every station up here had its own dispatch, but.
No, sir, we're a regionalized dispatch, so we handle every station. Everything, like I said, Wrightwood, so we handle all the Victor Valley, so all the county stations that they handle, the city of Adelanto, Hisperia, Apple Valley, city of Victorville, Barstow, Trona, Colorado River, Needles, Morongo, Yucca Valley, it's all out of the same dispatch.
San Bernardino County?
Yes.
Pretty much. You get a call, then you make some evaluation, or do you just direct it straight to the station?
Well, we are the primary piece app, the public safety answering point, all nine-one-ones that cover in our jurisdiction come through our center, and then we determine if it's police, fire, or medical. If it's a fire or medical, we do not take that, we automatically send it over to the fire department. They're the ones that will evaluate who needs to respond and everything. However, we don't just hang up immediately, so that does tie up a dispatcher, because someone may call and say, I need an ambulance. We have to stay on the line to find out, do they need an ambulance because it's a police-related issue, so.
I would like to tour on a Friday or Saturday night to see how many calls are holding for the city of Victorville, is that possible?
Absolutely.
What was the question?
She wanted to make a tour on a Friday or Saturday night to see how, how many calls in the city of Victorville are holding. And you did make the statement earlier, I think it was you, Mr. Mayor, that, yes, all lines are recorded, no, we cannot cancel any call, any recording. So when we have complaints from the public as far as a dispatcher didn't do this, or someone called, or this or that, there's multiple ways for us to find out. If they just give us their name, their phone number, the date and time they called, it's easy for us to research.
And, and your recording device has the, the timing?
Yes, yes, sir.
So, so there's no, you know, somebody says, it took you twenty minutes to, to get to my place, and you check your, your tape, and it only took five. If somebody has a problem, they can, you can show them that, you know.
Absolutely, everything that we do, whether it's on the computer system is recorded and time-stamped, everything that we do on the telephones and on the radio is recorded and time-stamped.
If I see a party at eleven o'clock at night, and I decide not to call nine-one-one, I go to my cell, or, and I find the number for the local sheriff's office, and I call them, will that call go to you?
Yes.
It, it routes through their office?
Correct.
What if it's the middle of the day when their office?
We're there twenty-four-seven, three-sixty-five, the dispatchers are there twenty-four-seven, three-sixty-five.
Everything goes through dispatch?
Correct.
Yeah, I would encourage, for those of you that haven't been on that tour, I mean, I know Rudy's seen it in action, I've seen it in action, as well as been down to the, the fire comm center, and it's quite amazing, the bank of computers that these dispatchers have in front of them, the calls that they're taking, everything that they're dealing with, so it's definitely worth the tour and seeing what, what goes on. I imagine a Friday and Saturday night are going to be much busier than a normal day when I was there, but, but, but definitely worth seeing what these professionals do.
How many dispatchers do you have?
I, I have a staff of seventy, I'm currently down, I have six vacant positions and a couple people out on pregnancy leave, so I'm down about twelve positions.
But, but on a shift, how many do you have?
Uh, we'll average, and it varies between the dates, between the times and everything else. We base our call takers on the call volume, we pull statistical information on a regular basis to try and staff accordingly to the calls. The more, the most we ever have on call intake will be eight dispatchers, and that's usually Friday and Saturday nights, and then we also operate seven radio channels.
My next question is for Yoder. Captain Yoder.
If I may add one thing about dispatch, please. Every shift has a supervisor, so if any of your constituents have an issue when they call into dispatch and there is a problem, they can ask for a supervisor, and the supervisor will assist them in solving their issue or hopefully provide them some answers. So if those issues come up in the future, I mean, please recommend to them to ask for a supervisor if they have a problem when they call into dispatch.
A supervisor from dispatch?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
As, as he was saying, that they don't cancel calls there without getting back to the reporting party, so that's why I'm asking you. Are calls canceled for parties?
We do have sergeants that have canceled calls, yes.
And do they cancel calls without getting back to the reporting party?
They have done that, yes.
Is that appropriate?
I have addressed that with my staff. I've met with the dispatchers, and that will not happen again.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions or... All right.
I want to thank you all for that information and your work, and I appreciate it very much. Congratulations, Rod, on becoming captain.
Eric, you want to add something to it?
Yeah, on the, on the dispatch, I've been told numerous times that parties are category four, they're the least priority. So I'm just curious, since you've been here for nine years, when has it been, how long has it been priority two in your guys' standards, but if it goes to the sheriff's?
Party calls, party calls have always been a priority two. There's also a 415 music call. The difference is, is what the reporting party will tell us, whether, I'm going to give you a slight example. I hear music coming from my neighbor's house, and you go tell him to turn it off. That's going to be a priority four, music call. If somebody says, "Hey, my neighbors are having a party, there's a lot of cars," that becomes a 415. That's a party call.
So saying that there's a party and there's kids in the street, underage drinking, and they're in the backyard...
That would be a party call.
Okay, I was told it's priority four. So is it between, is it, is it you guys that say it's priority two in the sheriff department?
We're all sheriff's department.
Okay, then, because you said something that you guys have different structures of what, the calls, I guess you were saying? So is it, you guys say, "We have a party in progress," does the sheriff department say, "Okay, we'll get to it when we get to it, because it's just a little party?" Or is it you guys say, "Hey, there's..."
We enter calls based on the information we hear from the reporting party. The calls that we enter are already determined by the department themselves as far as what the priority will be. We don't determine the priorities in dispatch, it's already preset. So the information we hear from the reporting party, we enter the information in the system based on what the RP is telling us. So, like you said, if they said there's a large party next door, there's a bunch of kids drinking, that would be entered as a 415 party. That is a priority two. Priority twos are the third highest priority. However, if they have a lot of priority ones or even emergency-type priorities, those will be handled first.
So, because I have issues with parties and, you know, turning the fights and still have no income.
And that is possible, I'm sure.
So is that a, would that be a priority one if there's a fight and knives involved? Or is that still a priority two?
Well, the call is already entered. If you've already called, then we've entered a priority two, 415 party call. If you call back and say, "Hey, now there's weapons involved," we will advise the deputies in the field, we can raise the priority, you know, to a priority one, because now it's a life-threatening situation.
Okay, because I've called, we had a party about six months ago behind us. Party started at eight o'clock. We started from eight o'clock until one o'clock in the morning calling police. The Forty King flew over four or five times. As soon as the Forty King flew over, you know, he wasn't even flying over to the party. Just, they turned the music down, they leave effing pigs and this and that. We could hear them in the backyard. We're calling the police, telling them exactly what they're saying. And then we call, say, "You know what, they're out there fighting now, and there's weapons and there's underage drinking." Oh, we have more priorities than that. So if...
I can't speak for them because I don't know what it is. If you had a date and time, I can research it. Like I said, all our calls are recorded. Every time somebody calls in, it's recorded, so we have, we're able to keep chronological order on how those calls came in and what information was given. So you understand dispatch's job. Our job is to take the information from the reporting party. We enter calls for service. We enter it into the system. We put it out to the deputies. How it gets handled after that is out of dispatch's.
And what's the timeframe of a person being on, on call with you guys? It was supposed to be...
As far as, what do you mean?
Uh, we had an incident a couple weeks ago. We were on, we were on the phone for twenty-two minutes from the time of call. There was, the police officers were already in the area, and twenty-two minutes on phone was dispatch.
I can't tell you where the deputies were responding from. Everybody assumes that there's going to be a deputy in their neighborhood, that they're going to back...
Can I ask that this, that the details of these particular problems being discussed?
It's something that I'm trying to figure out.
I understand that, but let's investigate the details and find out exactly what happened, okay?
Well, it's not really that. I'm just trying to figure out what the timeframe of a person being on hold, waiting for someone to come, if there, if it's a natural priority.
Understand.
Well, and, and I think, you know, your, your questions are appropriate. My, my fear is, is that what you're being told versus what is the actual facts are somewhat different, and I, I hope that you're not getting your information off Facebook, because I know that people on Facebook are promoting that there's so much crime in Victorville and, and that, you know, parties are not a priority. Obviously, based upon what we heard tonight, they are a priority, they will be dealt with, but, you know, emergency calls or priority ones are going to, are going to trump those, so...
I'm getting my information from telling the dispatch that I have, I'm being called a snitch, or snitches or bitches and get stitches. I tell the dispatch that, and they say, "Oh, just lock your doors, you have nothing to worry about." That's where, that's where my, I'm coming from. I'm not getting anything off the, off online. I live in Brentwood, everyone knows this. I'm saying what I'm seeing. So that's...
Okay. Well, I just know that there's been a lot of misinformation put out there on Facebook, so I just want to make sure you're getting it from your own situation.
I'm getting from dispatch saying, "Uh, just lock your door, you're fine," is what, you know, and I'll, I'll give you dates on that.
Yeah, I'd appreciate, because Eric, I would want him to at least get back with you and...
I talked to Captain Yoder about that when we had the community meeting.
Okay.
So I'm just, now that he's here, I'll speak to him about that, but I just wanted to figure out what's going on with the priorities. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I think it's very important that if you have an incident and something occurs like that, that it be very specific, the day, the time, and so on, so they can, you guys can go back and check the tape, and the tape will reveal everything. Getting back to these priorities, I, in a prior house that I lived, there was a party going on my neighbor's, and then the fight started, and so I called it in as, as people fighting, and the police were there within five minutes, I think it was three minutes or five minutes, there was two patrol cars, and then there was a third one there in about another five minutes, and it took this guy away. He had a machete, and, you know, he was striking people, so it depends on, on how you report the, the incident. So, anyway.
Okay, we'll move on to agenda item number twenty-eight. This is council committee, council committee reports for any boards or, or other commissions you might sit on. I'll start with Councilmember Vias.
On VVTA, which is Victor Valley Transit Authority, the number of passengers per revenue and passengers per revenue mile has increased for July of 2011 as compared to July of 2010. Total ridership is almost up thirty thousand for this, for this July versus last July. Route number forty-five, which travels from Costco to Victor Valley College and then to Hesperia, continues to be the highest ridership route on the system. Four, four Victor Valley Transit Authority board members are attending the Public Transportation Association in New Orleans this week. I'm not going. That's it.
Rudy?
None.
Councilmember Rothschild?
Nothing.
Nothing? Okay. The only thing I report on, I got my sandbag meeting, community, board meeting tomorrow, but I was, I did attend the League of Cities. I did pay my own way, both registration, airline, and hotel, so none of your taxpayer dollars were spent on that. It was interesting conference, a lot of good information shared. We didn't really vote on a whole lot of things that dealt with items that would affect our city, but there was a resolution passed to provide alternative methods of advertising, of public hearings and things like that, which was supported by the Mountain Desert Inland Empire Division for mountain communities and other outlying areas that don't have daily newspapers. So that was really the only major thing to speak of, but it really doesn't affect Victorville. But anyway, it was, it was, it was a good time and a lot of good working with other members and councilmembers throughout our area. All right, we'll move on to agenda item number twenty-nine, discussion of possible action regarding items for the upcoming, upcoming city council agenda. Councilmember Rothschild?
Amen.
Yeah, this is in response to Mr. Mueller's request. I would like to ask staff to give us a report on legal fees by each of the entities that, that our attorney serves, what each entity budgeted and what the actual spending has been. Mr. Mueller is right that the checks are drawn out of one fund, but the expenses are allocated to whichever department used, not just departments, but whichever entity used that service. It's not just departments of the general fund. It's RDA, SCLA, Water District, BMOs, all of the different entities. And I would think staff could, could tell us what the actual spending is against budget. I don't know how long that might take you to pull together. I would think it'd be fairly easy.
It wouldn't be a problem to pull the information together. Don't know that it would be on the next agenda, because the deadline for the next agenda is tomorrow at nine AM.
Oh, well, all right. Well, then, let's put it out a couple weeks, so that at least we have those facts, we can see how the fees are budgeted and how they're spent. Okay?
I'm okay with that. Are you okay with that?
Yeah.
All right. Anything else?
I have none.
I would like to request that there be a, maybe a staff report monthly, just a list of what litigation is pending, so we can be a little bit more transparent, and if we can, mention like what the status is. I mean, even if it's just holding, so that there's not so many questions, because I know, I get a lot of questions by email, and I don't know what the answers are, and I keep referring them back to the city. So if we, if we could do that, that would be great.
Totally.
And, and maybe if we could add to Mr. Kennedy's request regarding the legal expenses, if we could have that, like a monthly staff report, so that we could, we're, we're watching it.
Well, I, I wouldn't be interested in it monthly. I'd like some kind of mid-year, year-to-date numbers, so we can address the question Mr. Mueller has raised about whether or not they're eight hundred percent over budget, which I'm confident is not true. But, no, I don't want, I don't have, I have no interest in legal fees on a monthly basis more than any other expense item.
This is about agendizing it, so it's more or less for further discussion. Do you, would you be open to having that on a future agenda just to discuss?
And then I would like to, I noticed that we had a disabled member of the public. If we could have a microphone so that we can see the person when they're speaking.
Our portable ones are down, and why couldn't we just have handed that, maybe if we thought about it?
I don't think anybody, I wasn't sure if that's going to work, but maybe she could pull her chair up.
Yeah, if we can, well, I'm sure we can figure that out, but I'm, I'm fine with that, too. Obviously, the podium's too high for that situation, so I'm fine with that.
Okay. And then I'd like to agendize an RFP for a full-service law firm to help control our legal fees.
No.
All right, I have nothing for future agenda items, so agenda item number thirty is reports from councilmembers and staff, starting with Councilmember Vias.
All right, I was done with my request, and, and I was wondering if we could get an update on the spice of life, how we did compared to previous years, and how much money we made. Or where does the money go to? That's what I...
We'll include that in the report. I don't, I don't actually know the exact funding path. I mean, I think the event effectively pays for itself. That's the intent, at least. I don't think there's any real profit to be had, but we'll include that in the report.
Oh, I see. Okay.
If you want to wait or John, John can give you a report on that. Unless you'd rather wait?
We just have numbers right now.
Okay.
We still have the old...
Yeah.
We always, we have that by the time we have our...
As far as the spice of life, and, you know, we're, we've been working on it for ten years now, and it was a success. We had, most of the communities involved, we had the Koreans, the Indian-American, the Native Americans, the African-American community, Hispanic community, and so it was a success for the people.
I planned to make, I was planning on making it, but I, I wasn't feeling well, so I didn't make it. Was it as good as it was last year?
What was that?
Was it good, as good as it was last year?
Probably better.
Better, so the economy's getting a little bit better? You see that?
Well, it, actually, everything's free, other than food, so it's the economy, because of the economy, I think, also, we have a free kids zone, so that, we have a lot of people coming out for that.
Anything additional under reports? Okay.
I have none.
Yes, I'm going to be speaking, or buying my minute, at the chamber breakfast tomorrow, and so I wanted you to let the council know. And the reason that I brought this up again, it really angers me, this sphere of influence that happens to the city of, actually, the city of Victorville, Atlanta, Barstow, and the Victor Valley. This article came out from the state agency complimenting our local LAFCO agency for its due diligence on land planning. Nothing could be further from the truth. Only in California could it be that seven thousand people have the right to take away from four hundred thousand people. If you look at the map I gave each of you, Hellendale's was originally the hundred-square-mile map, and by the way, I had, I thought back there they were going to put up, and people in the audience could see the map. By the way, I made five maps on the city's boundary, on the city's dime for the council. The thirty I'm going to hand out tomorrow at the chamber breakfast, I went over to Staples and bought on my dime, so this isn't a cost to the city. But I thought that you'd want to see this, because this article came out patting themselves on the back again. Here's what happened to the Victor Valley. The blue, dark blue area is Hellendale. They, they went to LAFCO and requested an expansion, almost double their size, no reason given, and even with the decisions made, no reasons given. I think Ms. Rollins's husband plays golf there, but other than that, there was no other reason mentioned for expanding it. Look what has happened to the Victor Valley with that expansion. Down to the bottom part there, to the south, you see a three-mile extension from Hellendale's, that hundred-square miles that they had, towards SCLA, where we're trying to create jobs and businesses and everything, allowing a seven thousand unincorporated community to have any influence on our land use decisions within three miles of that airport out there is a foolish, foolish thing. It's like the airports down in Los Angeles are now complaining, even though thirty years ago, everything was, seemed to be okay. Same way here, these people have no rights to move in there, yet LAFCO gave them that under the leadership of Brad Metzenfeld. Look over to the right there, next to the fifteen, just above where it says Victorville in the blue area, that's a three-mile spite strip given to, again, to Hellendale. It blocks Victorville's ability to move up the freeway quarter. We had an, an agreement with Barstow to meet at Wildwash, which is two miles into that yellow portion along the fifteen. Hellendale has no business being out there. There, matter of fact, their whole application should have been rejected, and ours should have been approved. The other parts there, I would imagine Atlanta would object to, the one over on the left side there that goes and extends over and, and takes us property that deals with them, side there that goes and extends over and takes us property that deals with them. And then up there to the north, again, Barstow, that runs right up against Barstow. When I asked Barstow's mayor, "Why weren't you guys at the LAFCO hearings objecting to this stuff?" I was. I made my, I went on record and made myself known to my, the problems there. They didn't even know about it. That's one of the problems, when you have new council members with good intentions, I mean, a lot of times they miss things like this. This is a dramatic shot in the back to anybody living in the Victor Valley for job growth and business. So what I would do, this is sphere of influence. It can be changed. And I would challenge whoever will be running for supervisor and in about 18 months, one of the teed-up questions is going to be, "What are you going to do about this misfortune for the city of Victorville?" Hellendale, 7,000 people are going to determine the land use decisions up to 15 approaching SCLA. I think that's a terrible mistake. The hole in the middle, by the way, our application went all the way up to the purple area, but they carved that out as well for, as a benefit to TXI because they didn't want to be in the city. So what we had was an expanded portion right up to 15 there. The Desert Express train station will be up near the top part of that light blue area where it says Victorville, just barely within our boundaries. Hellendale shouldn't have any, any footprint along the 15 at all, none whatsoever. So I would challenge that whoever would be running for supervisor, that one of the things they'll do as their position on LAFCO is to rescind that sphere of influence. Spheres of influence can be changed. We changed it with the golden triangle. There's a piece right here above, next to Barstow, Atlanta, and Victorville, just above that, just below that yellow spot there. I, I don't know if you can see the markings there, but that was a swap from, from Atlanta and Victorville. So all those things are in play now. It's incredible that a community, an unincorporated community of 7,000 doubles their size and intrudes into three other communities plus the Victor Valley's job creation abilities at SCLA. This is a travesty of justice. I would hope that people wouldn't be upset about it. I know it's subtle and it's one of those things that kind of gets on, sneaks up on you when you don't know what's happening. But the future is now. We're coming out of this, this economic doldrum and there is 400,000 people in the Victor Valley. There's going to be a million people in the next 15 years into the Victor Valley. This kind of nonsense, it just hands it over to the tree huggers that want to shut down all growth and development in California. This is exactly what the environmental movement loves because it gives a small pot of people a chance to have veto powers over a large body of people that have far more professionalism in their land use decisions. So I wanted you to see the map, to see what has happened here. They didn't give Victorville nearly half of what we deserved and wanted. We should have been all the way up to that purple area, all of that filled in there. They modified Oro Grande, that's great. That was the one probably positive note out of the whole process is modifying, allowing them to identify their little community, but they're still in the unincorporated areas. And they also had a learning curve as well, that they were losing a lot of their taxes that they ought to have had, the county wasn't giving them. And I would think that SCLA also veda, you know, there's a tax issues here that that, that is generated in that area, that is denied veda. I'm wondering where that went. It's in the county area and yet the county has a very small contribution into our veda program. They should have had a substantially larger one and in fact, one of the benefactors should have been Oro Grande. That's my pitch today. Now I only have, now having said that, I talked to you, what, for 10 minutes here? And I got to whittle that down to one minute. I've got one minute I'm going to be buying in the morning, so we'll see how I do. But I do have 30 of these maps I'll be handing out at tomorrow's breakfast and then asking the legislative review to research it, invite anybody in they want, including myself, and take a position on rescinding the sphere of influence for that expansion to Hellendale. So that will be my pitch to the Victorville Chamber tomorrow at the breakfast.
I think they're going to ring the bell.
They will.
Well, I got to, now you're going to figure out how to say that in one minute.
I just want to address, if I may, briefly, Mr. Smith's discussion with the chief, and I know I appeared impatient. I don't believe that the, we allow public comment. That is time for us to hear the public comment on things that are of interest to them. We purposely do not engage in debate with public on those issues.